Taylor, are the mics on? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Grass Regular Regular Meeting of the Grass Valley City Council, Tuesday, November twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four. Any person with a disability who requires accommodations to participate in this meeting should telephone the City Clerk's Office at five-three-zero-two-seven-four-four-three-nine-zero at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting to make a request for a disability-related modification. City Council welcomes you to attend the meetings electronically or in-person at the City Hall Council Chambers, located at one-two-five East Main Street, Grass Valley, California. Regular meetings are scheduled at six P. M. on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. Your interest is encouraged and appreciated. This meeting is being broadcast live on Comcast Channel Seventeen by Nevada County Media, on the Internet at www.cityofgrassvalley.com, or on the City of Grass Valley YouTube channel. Members of the public are encouraged to submit public comments via voicemail at five-three-zero-two-seven-four-four-three-nine-zero or email to public@cityofgrassvalley.com. Comments will be reviewed and distributed before the meeting if received by five P. M. Comments received after that will be addressed during the item or at the end of the meeting. Agenda materials, staff reports, and background information related to regular agenda items are available on the city's website. Materials related to an item on this agenda submitted to the council after distribution of the agenda package will be made available on the City of Grass Valley website, subject to city staff's ability to post the documents before the meeting. Please note, individuals may disrupt, disturb, impede, or render infeasible the orderly conduct of a meeting. You will receive one warning that, if they do not cease such behavior, they may be removed from the meeting. The Chair has authority to order individuals removed if they do not cease their disruptive behavior following this warning. No warning is required before an individual is removed if that individual engages in the use of force or makes a true threat of voice. Council Chambers, excuse me. Council Chambers are wheelchair-accessible and listening devices are available. So we'll call this meeting to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call, Taylor.
Councilmember Branstrom is absent. Councilmember Curvelli?
Present.
Councilmember Ivy?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hodge?
Here.
Mayor Arbuckle?
Here.
Four members are present.
Thank you. Agenda approval?
Uh, what was that? So we will be removing item six?
Item six?
Yes, correct. No other items. Or changes from staff.
To a different meet, to a future?
We'll bring it back at a future meeting, yes.
Okay. Okay, if there are no other changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll approve the agenda minus item number six.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business report on a closed session?
The council gave instructions to its real estate negotiator but did not take an action, which requires a report at this time.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is introductions and presentations. Reefs Across America. Is there, oh, there you are. I was gonna say, where are you? Okay. So, this is one of the best things I get to do as mayor. It really is. It warms my heart every time I get to go to the actual ceremony and do this. So, National Reefs Across America Day, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas each December on National Reefs Across America Day, their mission to remember, honor, and teach is carried out by coordinating reef-laying ceremonies at Arlington National Cemetery, as well as more than twenty-five-hundred additional locations in all fifty U. S. states, at sea and abroad. Whereas, from the Revolutionary War to present-day conflicts, veterans are devoted sons and daughters, fathers and mothers, sisters and brothers. They come from all backgrounds in life to place those lives on the line for our freedoms. There are millions of individual stories to tell. Whereas, Reefs Across America's mission touches the lives of thousands of schools, scout, civic, and religious groups across the country through fundraising for reef sponsorships. These groups help ensure that they reach their goal to place a reef on each hero's grave. In return, they receive fundraising dollars that assist in furthering their own goals and projects. Whereas, in many homes, there is an empty seat for one who is serving or one who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. There is no better time to express our appreciation than during the hustle and bustle of the holiday season. We hope you will join them at any of their more than twenty-five-hundred participating locations to show our veterans and their families that we will not forget, we will never forget. And whereas Reefs Across America will be having a ceremony in Grass Valley on Saturday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at Saint Patrick's Ceremony, at Saint Patrick's Cemetery. At twelve o'clock P. M., wreaths will be placed immediately following the ceremony. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Grass Valley so hereby proclaims December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as National Reefs Across America Day. Do you want to come forward, please?
I'm good.
Do you want to say a couple words?
I would love to say a couple.
Okay, Sally, you have to talk in the background.
Oh, I do.
You do. You have to talk in the background.
Well, I thought I would look at the people who were back there.
I know, but you have to address the council. The council, that's who they have.
Oh, I see. All right, I am addressing the council. And, once again, we thank you very, very much for making the effort to give us this proclamation every year. We appreciate it very, very much. We have a goal this year of two thousand wreaths. We haven't reached the goal, and the deadline has, is upon us. It's the twenty-eighth. So if there's anybody who still thinks that they would like to buy a wreath, I can give you a card, and on the card it has a Q. R. What is it, code? And you can go right to the site and buy wreaths up until midnight, the twenty-eighth. So I have those cards with me, and if you just indicate, I have a dinner engagement, so I'm going to leave as soon as I. Reefs Across America in Nevada County is sponsored by the D. A. R., the Daughters of the American Revolution. I am the co-chairman. I think last year Bonnie Magnetti came, and the year before that, I came. So we take turns doing the work. And I'm the major fundraiser, so that's why I talked about buying wreaths. Thank you so very, very much. We appreciate this. And will you be at our ceremony?
Yes.
Oh, Jen, good. That's wonderful.
Yes, I'll be there. Thank you, Sally, and thank you for all that you guys do.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public are encouraged to submit public comments via voicemail at five-three-zero-two-seven-four-four-three-nine-zero or email to public@cityofgrassvalley.com. Comments will be reviewed and distributed before the meeting if received by five P. M. Comments received after five P. M. will be addressed during the item or at the end of the meeting. Council will have the option to modify their action on items based on comments received. Action may be taken on any agenda item. There is a time limitation of three minutes per person for all emailed, voicemail, or in-person comments, and only one type of public comment per person. Speaker cards are assigned for public comments that are on any items not on the agenda and within the jurisdiction and interest of the city. Speaker cards can be pulled until the opening of public comment, at which time sign-ups will no longer be allowed. These cards can be found at the City Clerk's desk or in the back of the room. If you wish to speak regarding a scheduled agenda item, please come to the podium when that item is announced. When recognized, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Thirty minutes of public comment will be heard under this item in order of the speaker card assigned, and the remaining general public comments will be heard at the end of the meeting. And we will open public comment and begin with number one.
Shirley Oskut here from Grass Valley. I lost count of how many times I've been here. Twenty-some, twenty-six, twenty-seven, I don't know. My heart is still breaking every day when I get up and watch the news, and it is my belief, as I have said many times, that it's the responsibility of every person and every group and everybody who can possibly do anything to do something. And I'm asking you to put a ceasefire resolution on the agenda. I do want to just review, because the ceasefire resolution is going to talk about genocide. I want to review what the U. N. Resolution, known as the Genocide Convention, the part of it that deals with what consists of a genocide, what makes up a genocide. And this was adopted in December ninth, nineteen forty-eight, by the U. N. General Assembly, and ratified by one hundred and fifty-one states, including Israel. And it went into effect in nineteen fifty-one, and the U. S. became a signatory to the convention in nineteen eighty-eight. In the present convention, genocide means any of the following acts committed with intent to destroy in whole or in part a national ethic ethnical, racial, or religious group as such. A, killing members of the group. B, causing serious bodily or mental harm to members of the group. C, deliberately inflicting on the group conditions of life calculated to bring about its physical destruction in whole or in part. D, imposing measures intended to prevent births within the group. And E, forcibly transferring children of the group to another group. And I just want to remind you what we're asking for. This is from the Nevada County Coalition for Human Rights and the Peace and Justice Center of Nevada County. So we're asking for you to support, to put a ceasefire resolution on the agenda, and we call for an immediate and sustained ceasefire in Palestine. The unhindered passage of all humanitarian aid to Gaza. The end of U. S. military aid to Israel, condemnation of Islamophobia, anti-Semitism, and all acts of hatred, and a declaration that County of Nevada, California stands united against genocide. Thank you for, it's about time.
Thank you for your comments. Next person for public comment?
Good evening. My name is Robyn Galvin-Dabees. I am the Executive Director of the Greater Grass Valley Chamber and Grass Valley Downtown Association. First and foremost, I want to thank you so much for our beautiful Mill Street Plaza. It is decorated in a magnificent manner. We thank you heartily for providing this fabulous backdrop for our Cornish Christmas event, which will begin on Friday, November twenty-ninth, and continue each Friday until December twentieth. So the twenty-ninth, December sixth, December thirteenth, and December twentieth. We hope that you can join us in downtown Grass Valley for this wonderful, wonderful Step Back in Time event. Also, on December fourth, the Grass Valley Downtown Association and the Greater Grass Valley Chamber are holding a holiday mixer at the Holbrook Hotel. The board will be installed at that time, and we hope that you can join us. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next person for public comment?
Hi, my name's Liz, and I'm a Grass Valley resident. I didn't write anything tonight, because I just, I'm tired. This has been going on for over a year now. And still no movement from you guys. Ten thousand dollars of taxpayer money, though, right, from this county? Or from this, from Grass Valley? Didn't you guys? For a community conversation? Not yes? Shake head no? Yeah, okay. So ten thousand dollars you guys used for a conversation that none of you shit up for? No, you did not?
Mm-mm.
She says yes, you said no?
We did not.
Okay, so I'm super confused, because when we came here months ago, it was my understanding, and many others, that you were committing ten thousand dollars, and Nevada City was committing ten thousand dollars for a community conversation. That's not what happened?
Liz, you know we can't respond, but we will get the information to you.
That would be great, because I feel like something was majorly misrepresented in that case. Because we were told many times that you guys were going to be a part of a community conversation, and that we were going to be moving towards putting a ceasefire resolution on the agenda. And whether or not it got voted down, it was at least going to be put on the agenda. I am so tired of coming here and you guys pretending like you give a shit. I don't know how many people is your red line for you to speak up. I don't know how much money we have to send to foreign countries for you guys to speak up. I don't know how many constituents have to come in here and say that we want you to speak up for you to speak up, but we're tired. As you can see, most of the people are gone, but I promise you, it's not because they don't think that genocide is bad or that they want you to put a ceasefire resolution on the agenda. It's because they've lost all faith in you, because you don't listen, and you don't do anything that you say you're going to do. Maybe you didn't donate that money, but we definitely were in here for a conversation when you said you were going to, and that you were going to be a part of a community conversation. So, I'm sick of it. A lot of people are sick of it. Put a ceasefire on the agenda. At least vote it down. Stop wasting our time, because we're going to keep coming. Because it's worth it, and we think genocide is bad. I'm sorry, it's not enough for you guys, but it is definitely enough for us. I don't even know what I'm saying up here. I want to get the fuck out of here.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else for public comment? Were there only three numbers? Oh.
Well, I'm really here to listen in on the conversation about thirteen eighty-three. Can I not comment at that time after I hear the discussion?
No, would you, if you're, if that's why you're here, you comment at the time that the item is read.
That's what I want.
Thanks. You're welcome. Was that the last number? Okay, is anybody in the virtual world?
There is nobody in the virtual world. However, I do want to note for the record that today there was over a thousand pre-written emails sent to the city in regards to no on a ceasefire. And all of these emails were exactly the same. So there was no reason for us to actually put it into the minutes, but I did want to make a note for that, and they are available if, for viewing, if they need to be.
Okay, thank you. So there's nobody else in the virtual world? Okay, then we are going to close public comment and come back to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent. All matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless before the City Council votes on the motion to adopt, members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and action. But council action is required to do so. Unless the council removes an item from the consent for separate discussion, public comments are invited as to the consent calendar as a whole and limited to three minutes per person. Is there, the item number six has been pulled from the consent? And anything else? Any other, okay, then.
Madam Mayor, I just have one question.
Absolutely.
Rosenberg's Rules of Order aren't meaningful different, meaningfully different than what we operate under currently?
No, they're just a highly simplified version of Roberts', and we never get past the highly simple with just five people. Roberts was written for a five-hundred-member body.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, then I will open public comment for any item that is on the consent, any item that is on the consent calendar. Only at this time. Not seen anybody rush into the podium. I will go to the virtual world.
There are no additional public comments.
Okay, then I will close public comment and bring it back to council for a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number seven, public hearing. Amendments to the Waste Management Franchise Agreement tied to state-mandated implementation of S. B. thirteen eighty-three, A. B. three forty-one, and A. B. eighteen twenty-six recycling and organic waste programs. Who, Sac?
Good evening. Hopefully we can get PowerPoint up here. While that's coming up, I'll introduce myself, Zach Quatmore, Public Works Department, good evening, council. And so I'll be presenting two items tonight. So basically, we're looking at the contract item first. So we have an amendment with Waste Management Franchise Agreement. And if council ultimately decides to approve that and decides that they do want to continue business with Waste Management, we'll then be looking at a fee update for the services that Waste Management is proposing in that updated agreement. So I'll just jump into it here. So we reviewed S. B. thirteen eighty-three at several of our meetings already. I'll just give a real quick brief background of the S. B. thirteen eighty-three. So basically, half of what California sends to the landfill comprises organic materials, green waste, wood waste, paper waste, food waste. And those organic materials, when they end up in our landfill, they emit methane gas. And methane gas does contribute to climate change. So the State of California passed S. B. thirteen eighty-three, which is an aggressive effort to curb climate change. S. B. thirteen eighty-three includes a variety of different programs, including organics collection, which is what we're here, what brings us here tonight, which requires us to update our agreement with Waste Management. But also includes education, outreach, procuring recycled organic products, food recovery programs, and recycling food recovery capacity, and then monitoring compliance and conducting enforcement. This remote? For the TV?
Yeah, TV's not working, but we can see.
Gotcha, okay. So a little background, the city adopted the current agreement that we're operating under today in two thousand and twelve with Waste Management. Since that time, there's been a variety of California state laws that have been passed requiring collection of organic materials such as food scraps, food soil, paper, in addition to landscape trimmings. Amending the existing Waste Management Agreement is necessary to comply with these new laws. And then since two thousand and twenty-two, a committee of city staff and council members have met on and off with Waste Management to negotiate an updated contract. After two years of negotiations and multiple rounds of legal review, we believe that we have an updated contract that's both compliant with state law as well satisfies both, satisfies, satisfies both Waste Management and the city. Some of the notable agreement updates include modifying the language for compliance with state laws, implementing Waste Management implementing Waste Management Smart Truck Technology, an audit and review of city free services, addition of performance standards and corresponding liquidated damages procedures and amounts. So if Waste Management doesn't perform to the, the standards outlined in the contract, the, the city has the ability to, you know, keep them accountable. And then amending the fee schedule for expanding services related to new organic programs. So what's next? Waste Management is scheduled to begin delivering organic, organic carts in December. So for any customer that doesn't currently already, already have a green waste or organics cart, they'll be receiving, you know, Waste Management will be delivering one to them. Organic collection services are scheduled to begin on January 6. And then Waste Management has dedicated a local customer support email in front of her through January 31, 2025. So if there's customers that have any issues with the new program, there will be local staff dedicated to answering emails and phone calls. They won't be going to the normal, you know, call center. And then city staff will continue, continue development and implement SB 1383-related programs, including food recovery, education, and outreach, and compliance and enforcement. So that concludes my brief presentation. And then I will mention that we do have several representatives from Waste Management here, a good team to help answer any questions that you guys may have.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation, Zach. And does council have any questions of Zach?
I have two questions really fast. We start and implement this new thing on the 6th of January, correct?
Correct.
And then we're only having any sort of 1-800 number to be reached out until the 31st?
The 31st of January, correct?
Do you think we?
That's the current schedule.
Okay. I would like to maybe, is that through us, through the city, or is that through Waste Management?
Waste, Waste Management has offered that to, to have that local number available and to have that, you know, local staff available to answer those lines and answer those emails. They feel that that first month, they're going to get the bulk of those questions. And then from there, they can turn it over to their call center staff will be adequately trained at that time. They may be able to expand on that if you have questions.
I feel like it's short, so that's just kind of my question. I feel like it's a really short amount of time. It's less than a month, so I would like to revisit that at some point. When it comes down to the food recovery project, what, can you elaborate a tiny bit? I mean, I know we've gone round and round about this new law and we have to implement something, but I am very curious about the food, there's some other, like the food recovery. We, we're really good in government of saying the things we're going to do and we give very brief descriptions. I know it's in depth here, but can you explain a little bit about food recovery, what that looks like?
Yeah, so that, for, for the most part, that part's out of Waste Management's contract.
I know, except for the city.
For the city to work with restaurants. So when they have leftover food at the end of the night, they're either giving, providing that food to staff or, you know, somebody can come and pick it up. Grocery stores, if they have food that's no longer sellable, that they're donating that to one of our recovery organizations in town. So there's a variety of different programs that requires food that has traditionally been thrown away or, you know, gone to some other stream that it's being placed in the hands of people that need it.
I think it would be really good for us as a city to be able to get some information out when, when, as, when January 6 happens to where people can take their food recovery. Because we say this, and owning a restaurant, I understand where I can take some things that are expired or whatnot, but with, and what I can do with some of my food scraps and what I can do with those. But I think it would be a really great thing for us as a city to implement where we can distribute that. So I'd like to take that little last paragraph that you put of all the different things that we have to do as a city. And I'd like to get that information a little bit more out to the community, a tiny bit, especially restaurant owners or grocery stores and people like that. I'm just, I'm going to add that in there. I know this is not the topic of the conversation, but I really do, I want to express that I feel like we need to get that information, that bulk of that information to the people so they know how to follow the rules. Because if we only have a phone call that we can call for two weeks to ask a question, this is a long thing, term thing that the state isn't making us do. I do think we need to revisit that a tiny bit. And maybe we can do that with city staff internally, but I do think it's important. That's all my statements.
Agreed.
Other than anything.
Yeah, I think from a staff perspective, we're looking to get through this phase with Waste Management, rolling out the residential green waste program. And then we're slowly going to be building and implementing those other programs and continuing that education outreach. So we have limited staffing available to tackle some of this. So it's going to be kind of a step-by-step process and not one large rollout that you may see in other jurisdictions, I think.
As well as possibly collaborating with our neighbors who need to be figuring this out at the same time, is that fair to say?
Our neighbors in, as in neighboring jurisdictions?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Nevada County certainly is, is rolling out this program at the same time we are.
Hillary.
I really appreciate all of the staff and participants who collaborated to come up with a solution to this. It has been a long road to hoe and I just want to acknowledge the thought process that went into this. I wish in the beginning someone would have just said, we're now going to put our food waste in our yard waste bin. Would have really simplified the whole process for all of us. And I really appreciate Green Waste's community outreach and education programs. I've seen them at numerous community events in the last few months with their new little buckets to put the food waste in the yard waste bin. So I know the education effort portion has been going on for some time. I'm wondering if there is any data because the 800 number time limit is new? And is it because there's already been a precedent for how long people need to access this? Because what I have, I have used the 800 number for Waste Management personally. And the jurisdiction where the call center is, is very confused about what the foothills look like. And I am concerned that our citizens are not going to be addressed with their concerns in a way that's going to be helpful.
Yeah, so as far as the.
Larry, just say your name.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Larry Picard with Waste Management, district manager. As far as the, the phone number and email that they can both either call or email us, we'll answer them in time. We modeled this after several other jurisdictions that we've rolled it out. And they found that, that within that month and a half, because we started at November 15th and it's going through to January 31st, we can extend it. It's no big deal to us. But yeah, that, in, in what we've seen in other jurisdictions, that, that seems to be about the time that, that questions get answered and die down. And all the confusion goes away, not goes away, but subsized and, and we get cart sizes organized. People, you know, they think they're getting one size and they get another and we get it all figured out for them.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And, and to Haven's question about food recovery, that is part of the educational program is, is what people can do with edible food where they can bring it. The, the local organizations that will take it and such, so.
Is there going to be a list of, of who those are and?
Yes.
Addresses?
Yes.
And will that be coming out in January as well?
No, it is, it will be coming out, like council member Hodge said, we've already been doing programs with the, the county. Grass Valley is just going to dovetail right into that. As soon as this is passed, we're going to be doing events in Grass Valley with the Chamber and the Downtown Association. We've already done some commercial restaurant webinars, as well as with residential webinars. Although via through the county, everybody was invited to, to call in and, and email in, so.
Okay, and so to address that, the number, the 1-800 number can be extended beyond the two weeks?
Well, like I said, we started November 15th. We're going through January 31st, but yes, we can extend it.
I think, especially for this community and the demographic that we have here, I think it would be, it would be in everybody's best interest if that was extended by at least two more weeks.
Yeah, we can do it.
Especially because now the holidays are coming and people are getting involved. And hopefully we don't have another snowmageddon.
Right.
Where everything.
Shuts down.
Goes crazy. And so if we could just count on that number, the availability of that number being extended.
We'll do it through the end of February.
Perfect.
And if there's, if there's a, a, a large need past the end of January, we'll consider extending it after that.
Okay.
And, and like I said, it's, it's both phone calls and/or emails. They can email at any time and we'll have staff available to respond.
Okay, but to speak to Hillary's point. I, I mean, the 1-800 number, the people who answer there in Arizona, they don't have any idea. And they're reading it, it appears, they're reading from a script.
They are.
And that's not helpful. That is not helpful.
Right.
That's why I call you.
Yep. But they're being educated as, as well as, as the, the citizens of Grass Valley.
One more question.
Sure.
When are the green waste containers going out to the people who no, who don't have them now?
They're going out starting mid-December.
Mid-December?
Mid-December. They'll have them before Christmas.
Can I ask one more logistic question?
Sure.
I've asked for this multiple times and I don't know if it's been out there because I don't, yeah. But having something in Spanish, do we have anything that's in Spanish? Or somebody that been education, education for restaurants in Spanish? That was my. Thank you.
Yep.
Tom?
So. Is, is now the time where we're auto-enrolled into now a three, a three-bins system, right? Everyone, if you have Waste Management service of any type, you now are required to have three bins. And they're all, we're auto-enrolled into a larger size, is that right?
No, they, they get the size of trash cart that they have.
Okay.
They'll get the same size green waste and recycle cart. They're, they're eligible or able to upsize if they want to, if they need to.
I see, okay. Okay, and then our next, we're not talking about price right now, right? That's the next.
That's the next one, the fee schedule, that's the next.
Okay, right on. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to open it up to public comment, so anybody that would like to speak to this issue, please come to the podium at this time.
Madam Mayor and esteemed council, Robin Galvin Davies, Executive Director of the Greater Grass Valley Chamber and the Downtown Association. Our Chamber and Downtown Association will work hand in glove with city and with Waste Management to help educate the community, our commercial community, and the residences, the residential community. Because we do act as our visitor center is often the community call center. So we are here to assist as needed.
Okay, thank you.
Shirley, for Waste Management, I mean, no.
You're working for Waste Management now, Shirley? Okay.
Okay, we, we, you know, we, we try and help out both from the city and the county and Waste Management as in mostly educational. They know we do things on Facebook and they see our next door and so on and so forth. And I've been really happy with all the forums that are happening. I guess my, I guess my real request is, I mean, A, I want to thank you all. I know all of you suffered through getting this thing together for a long time. And I really want to thank you for, for, you know, the, the, the way that you've come out at, at the end. I have a concern because after that last Ubinet forum webinar, you know, it was even something in the newspaper that said, you know, that was really, and it wasn't clear. And there's, I mean, and I had the same thing on, on Facebook on Nextdoor when I go back. It's really not clear and I tried to make it clear. So I'm just warning you that education is going to be really important. And every time you think you've educated them, guess what? There is another question, right? So, you know, you tell them what you're going to tell them, you tell them, and then you tell them again, and you probably need to tell them again. So. I, I, I'll just give you one, one example. My neighbor, she never heard of this. Okay, I talked to her this afternoon. She never heard of this. And the mandate that they have to have three, three bins, one of each one. You know, she doesn't use her green waste. She has a guy who takes her green waste. She needs about two trash cans. And anyway, the rules and the mandates really aren't going to fit everybody. There's not a one, one, it's really not going to fit everybody. So I, my offer, my suggestion to you is that, and my friends at Waste Management, you know, that we, we come back again when this, you know, we, let, let's get a month into it, let's say. But then come back and find out what the problems are. We're going to have to make exceptions. I'm, I'm an exception, you know? I mean, I, I'm an oddball. I compost everything. I have this much trash. I put it in my neighbor's bin every week. You know, the only thing I have is, is a little recycling and a little, and some green waste, you know, I can. And so it's like, ah, it's hard. So I, I, you know, we're going to go with it now. I understand that. But I also want to say that let's, let's come back in a month and find out what the problems are. And see if we can't give people some exceptions, you know? I'm glad you got a senior rate. That was good. Okay, all right. That's, that's what I need.
Thank you for your comments. Next person for public comment?
Two Shirley's in the room tonight. I guess my question, it sounded like the green waste bins come in different sizes. Am I allowed to ask them anything? No. Okay, because I want the smallest one if it's cheaper. Because I also.
You live in the county, is that correct?
Pardon?
You live in the county?
Yeah, but I understand it's the same for the county. That's what I was told. No?
Okay, I'm, go ahead and finish your public comment and I will ask Supervisor Swarthout to come to the podium.
Anyway, I, yeah. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anybody else here for public comment? Okay, I'm going to close public comment and bring it to the virtual world.
There are no additional public comments.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment and ask Supervisor Swarthout, can you come up and speak about the county and what's happening? Thank you.
I'm happy too, so thank you, thank you. Lisa Swarthout, District 3, County Supervisor. The rules are basically the same for the county and the city. It's my understanding that it doesn't matter what size green waste you have. The price is the same no matter what size you have. Is that correct? Yeah. And to respond to Shirley's comments, there are no exceptions. This is, has nothing to do with anything that the city or the county can do. The only exceptions right now that we are aware of for AB 1383 are if you have a population 3,000 or less, so Nevada City is exempt. Or if you're up above 6,000 square, 6,000 feet elevation, so Truckee is exempt. So this really does affect the city of Grass Valley and unincorporated areas of the, in the county. But pricing is different because the city pays a different price. And here's how I know this. I live in the city. This has very, been very interesting for me because I can look at it from the city perspective because I live in the city, so I pay Waste Management through what the city's contract is. Waste Management in the city of Grass Valley is more expensive than it is in the county. And I don't know the reason behind that. We're going to be having discussion about that at our next solid and hazardous waste meeting. But the, the rest of it is the same. So pricing, you know, and Tom, whoever said, you could have made it really simple by just saying that I throw my food waste into the, into the green waste. That really is, here's what's happening here. Your, everybody who has Waste Management Service has three carts now, no exceptions. If you have Waste Management Service, if you choose to compost, compost or self-haul, that is on you. But you're still going to have to separate your food waste out if you self-haul to waste, to the transfer station. So the simple, the simplest way on this is that everybody is getting three carts if you have Waste Management Service and everybody's going to be paying a little bit more. And I think you guys are going to be talking about the fee structure. So hopefully that answers your question. And I have, want to say I've enjoyed working with Tom on the solid and hazardous waste. This might be my last year. Usually we give that to the new person at the county. We have a new supervisor coming in, so. But I've actually enjoyed it. I've learned a lot, especially about the process of what's compostable and, 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 you know, going back to coming back in a month or whatever your timeframe is. There are a lot of people who are looking at different options for this. I think our hope, our hope should be from the governmental, the local governmental side is Cal Recycle, who is the one who is, this program is under through the state of California, that they will get so many phone calls and so many emails and have so many issues, especially in the rural environment, that they will come back and we can start looking at some exceptions. I mean, do those people really think that bears don't live below 6,000 feet? I mean, I live in the city of Grass Valley and there's bears in my neighborhood, so anyway, hopefully that was helpful.
Mountain lions.
Yeah, yeah. Anything that's going to get into your trash, packs of wild dogs roaming the streets.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, I'll bring it back to counsel for.
I have one more question for Zach. So it appears that we updated this in 20, this, um, agreement between us with Waste Management in 2012, so that was 13 years ago. The current one is for seven years that we're doing, right?
We're not extending it.
No, the current agreement that we're talking about tonight is to amend the agreement that we have, right? So that goes for another seven years?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a reason why we went 13 years without updating the agreement?
Well, I believe we probably went out to bid and signed someone up for 20 years. I'm just taking a wild guess, is that what you're kind of asking?
Yeah, I'm just asking the question.
So quite, quite a while ago, and there was probably pros and cons to that at that time, I'm not sure.
Usually the long term is allowing them to amortize the cost of facilities so that it doesn't do a big rate and hit an impact in the first five years.
Got it.
So if you're making changes at the transfer station, if you're rolling out new carts, all of those sorts of things.
So it extends the, the cost to the actual consumer. Okay, that, that was my only question, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or discussion regarding this?
I mean, you gotta love that, like, the continuously surrounded nicer neighborhoods in our county don't have to buy in to the startup phase of this process. So that's, that's nice, that's just really nice.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, I, can I make a motion then to?
Yes, you may.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution amending the agreement between the city of Grass Valley and Waste Management for solid waste collection.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, um, Zach? The next item on the agenda, item number eight, Fee Schedule Amendment for Solid Waste Collection Rates for Services Provided by Waste Management.
Okay, so now that you guys decide you wanna continue to do business with Waste Management, we'll talk about, uh, the fees, and the increased fees that they're proposing to offer these new services. So during, during a two-year period, uh, City Committee requested the Waste Management model a variety of different rate structures in effort to limit the cost increase to the customer. So we looked at three-card systems, four-card systems, and a variety of, uh, options in each of those systems. Trying to be creative in, in ways that, uh, we could limit the, the increase in cost to our customers. Ultimately, while we were looking at, uh, these different options, we were really looking at the cost of the customer. Whether they increase costs for Waste Management to provide the service, uh, the convenience to the customer. So whether or not they had to roll out three cards, four cards to the curve every week. Looking at an every-other-week garbage model where they may have to store garbage for two weeks and then, uh, potentially have to roll out a really heavy cart at the end of that two-week period. So what, what's the convenience to the customer? And then also looking at compliance to state law, uh, making sure that we're compliant with state law. But also what was the burden to either staff or Waste Management to, to stay in compliance? Whether or not you're trying to offer waivers or, um, you know, o-, offer the customers the ability to, you know, have flexibility. Or, you know, how much of that burden put on staff or additional staff time or Waste Management? Just to hassle for them to either report or, you know, operate under those conditions. So after that, that review, ultimately, uh, you know, the staff's recommendation to council, council, uh, asked staff to move forward with a bundled package, which is the three-card system that Lisa did a great job describing. So if you have Waste Management Services, you're gonna get three cards and, uh, you're gonna see an increase to your billing statement. So some of the, the rate adjustment drivers, um, there, there's two main ones. So the increased processing cost for the organic materials. Previously, when Waste Management was collecting green waste and they were processing it, they were doing it at about $70 per ton. Once you introduce the, the food scraps to that, that system, that price goes up to $120 per ton. Uh, and then the second item is that we're gonna be collecting that green waste cart or that organics cart every week instead of every two weeks. So there's increased cost for vehicles, labor, maintenance, uh, fuel. So if we look at, uh, this, uh, table here that shows the current rates on the left-hand side and then what, uh, the proposed rates are on the right-hand side. Under the, the left-hand side, the current rates, if you just have garbage service, uh, you get garbage and recycling for free. And, and you're paying that, that rate all the way to the left. If you do have a, a green waste cart or an organics cart, uh, it's, you know, it's about, you know, additional $6 to have that, that service now. And then on the right-hand side, uh, you'll no longer have the option of just having trash and recycling. You're gonna have to have all three carts and you'll be paying that fee all the way to the right, uh, under that orange section there. Uh, I will note that, uh, under the new rate structure, we're offering a senior rate and a low-income rate. So if you have a 35-gallon cart, uh, so it's only available at that 35-gallon cart option. But it was important for us to include that senior and low-income discount rate there. And then, you know, as I have conversations with the people who'll no doubtily start calling in here in the, the next month or so, really encouraging people to utilize that green waste cart, get as much as your trash, you know, the stuff that's going in the trash now, that food waste, napkins, paper plates, uh, and, and utilize that green waste cart. And then really kinda analyze and see, hey, can I downsize my cart? Cause that's the, the trash cart. So while the, the rates are going up, there is an option, or an opportunity to, you know, really start recycling, uh, more if you're not doing so. Utilizing that new organics cart and then really analyzing how much trash, uh, capacity you need and potentially downsizing your cart. Uh, and then the last item I'd like to add is that the, the city did go, um, you know, as noted in the staff report, you could go through the Proposition 218 process, where we mailed all the, uh, property owners of record, uh, notices outlining the, the, uh, rate increase. And then as of today, we've received, uh, just four protest letters. With that concludes my presentation on the rates. And again, happy to answer any questions and drag any of these Waste Management guys up here if we need to as well.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation, Zach. Are there any questions?
I have a question. I know we've gone round and round about the rates, and so thank you for all of this, cause I know that we've had lots of conversations with city staff and internal, and, you know, and council, we've, we've gone back and forth here and I, I understand all of that. If for some reason, this might be a question for you, Michael, let's say this doesn't work. We raise these rates, we go through this process, we go about six months, and then the state's like, whoop, never mind, we changed our mind. So we approved these rates. Can we come back later at a later date and change the rates back because we're not doing this offer to, this isn't no longer a thing?
We can't change the franchise without agreement of Waste Management. Uh, so what we owe them for their services is a contract. What we charge, we allow them to charge our customers is part of that contract. So our rate-making, we can bring it down. But their right to collect those rates is part of their contract. So if we found that the rules changed and that their cost structure changed and we were all looking at a likely lawsuit for overcharging, we would come to the table and work it out. Uh, in my experience, that's not the most common scenario.
That's the unfortunate part.
Things don't get cheaper.
Okay. I don't, I don't like that answer, but, okay. Thank you.
Hillary, do you have any questions?
No, I think the question I thought of actually applies to the last thing, but, um, one of the questions that I get the most from my constituents is, where do I put this thing? Or does cat litter go in the green bin or the other bin? Was the question I got today. And I was wondering about, like, if there is a function on Waste Management's website that can answer those questions for our constituents? I didn't find one. But I think if we get maybe a common list of asked questions like that, if they could be compiled on the website, that would be awesome. Cause a lot of people really wanna avoid the, "I got in trouble" fees, is what I'm hearing. They understand the rate increase, they're not pleased, but the, you know, making sure everything goes in the right place is important, to the rule followers that I talk to. So that, um, avoiding any misconduct fees, I think is important.
So the new organic carts that are being delivered, they'll be, what they call hot stamps, so they'll have, uh, information on the lid that'll tell them what they can and can't put in the organics cart. Uh, any of the ones, customers that already have a cart, they'll be, uh, getting stickers so they can apply those to their cart. So that just covers the organics cart, but you're right, you get that same question for recycling and, you know, trash as well.
Tom?
Well, why is it more expensive outside city limits than inside city limits?
That's a great question, that's a great question. Um, I don't know, uh, Eric may wanna tackle that, or he, he may wanna give back to you at a later date.
No, actually, I'd like to hear the answer.
I'm Eric Lynch from Waste Management, area sales director. I don't know if I can answer that today, but I'll be more than happy to, to bring back information to do so. You know, most of the time, you know, the, the costs, i- i- it's humongous spreadsheets, but, but it, it looks at everything from the average time stop between each location, average set-out fees. You know, in this, you know, scenario, we're, we're buying a new truck. We look at every single cost, you know, that we could, we could subdue. So, you know, from a labor standpoint, we're not even putting in a full driver, we're putting in 0.46 of a driver to pick up the new, the new lifts. There's 974 new customers that are getting green carts. There are an additional, you know, which is additional 4,000 lifts. There's additional 4,900 lifts of, of, um, carts that are going from every other week to, to every week, right? So all those individual costs are taken into consideration for the individual district. You know, as to answer, you know, Lisa's question and, and yours, you know, we would have to, you know, you know, come back with a side-by-side on major categories and say, and, hey, this is the vehicle cost between the two, this is the labor cost between the two, so then we can, we can answer that, you know, more fully.
I, I think that, um, a lot of the people that I've spoke to are, are concerned because looking at the new rate structure, it's probably about $10 a month roughly. And to some people, $10 a month is, you know, a Starbucks. But to some people, that $10 a month is very, very precious. And when they're being forced to do this, I know you said there's a senior rate. And that's only, if I understood it correctly, only for the 35-gallon, correct? And what is it, what do you consider a senior? What age? It just says senior, senior in high school, what?
Sixty-two.
I'm sorry?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two? And older, okay. I'm sorry?
There's a low-income rate too.
So it's, it's sixty-two and low income?
Or.
Or, it's an either-or?
Or.
Okay, but it has to be only the 35-gallon?
Correct.
Correct, okay. That's gonna be an education too, that needs to really be very clear.
Sure.
As well, so, I mean, I understand that rates go up. I mean, the cost of doing everything is going up. So, um, but it's just very difficult for us to say, okay, all you people, because of our demographic, that are on fixed incomes, well, now you're gonna have to pay an extra $10 a month, which is another $120 a year. I don't do math well, but I think that's right. So I think it's something that, uh, we don't take lightly. You know, when we look at any opportunity, what will be the senior rate for the 35-gallon? Do we know?
It was on the sheet, so.
Did it, did I just miss it? I probably did.
On the right-hand.
You see it?
We can't see it.
It was on the power.
Oh, on the power, cause I didn't think I saw it in here. On our, on our stuff.
Twenty-seven fifty-two. Where if, if you previously had a 35-gallon, uh, can.
I see what you're saying, right up here.
Yeah, if you had a 35-gallon trash and, and you had organics or green waste, you're paying 28.92, so.
So it went up four dollars, little less than $4.
Well, it, it could go down, you know, go down to twenty-seven fifty-two.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, I see, I'm looking, I looked at the wrong thing. So it went down a dollar. I just think it's important that we let our seniors and our low-income people know and what the threshold is for the low income as well. And not just say, "low income" or "senior," cause that can mean anything, different things to different people. So however your education materials go in, please, I, I appreciate it if it was very, very clear what those parameters are. Is, if it's on there, that's great. Okay.
And have a, if you're low-income, how to apply for it, you're a senior, how to apply. It's all gonna be done in our local office.
So we don't have to call the 800 number in Arizona? Okay, thanks. Or call Lori direct, right? All right.
But so just to be clear, I mean, we, so you have to drive less in-between pickups, you need less labor, you need less truck, you need less. So, so how, so how does that factor, how do all these factors equal us being a little more expensive than our neighbors? Require a little more gas, there's a little more distance in between those?
Yeah, like I said, I don't have the side-by-sides right here, right now, but I'll be more than happy to, to, to bring those back and, and look side-by-side.
I guess that does not make sense.
Nope.
Okay, thank you. No more questions? Okay, then I'm gonna open this up. I'm gonna open this up to public comment, so anybody that would like to, um, comment on this, uh, agenda item, please come to the podium at this time.
Well, there's still been, uh, one question for me. I haven't heard anybody talk about, you know, the Waste Management.
Shirley.
Talk about, uh.
Shirley, this way.
If you, if you choose to opt out, I haven't seen any, anything about that. If someone chooses not to do it and go self-haul, is there an information on that? When do they have to do that?
Okay, I, I'm, I think, can't they be done at any time? You can opt out of Waste Management at any time?
Yeah. I mean, but you're, you're setting up the service for a certain date to start. They're setting up the service for a certain date to start. And should you opt out before that date if you're, if you think you're gonna opt out? I mean, I haven't seen anything about that, I was just curious.
That's a, that's a very valid question. Well, make sure that we get that answer.
Okay.
Anybody else here for public comment on this agenda item? Anybody in the virtual world?
There are no additional public comments.
Okay, I'm gonna close public comment and ask Larry to come back to the podium, please.
So in reference to Shirley's question, if a customer calls today and says, "I wanna opt out of Waste Management Services and self-haul," done. It, it happens today, as soon as we can pick up the carts, which is usually within seven business days. And they won't get a green cart if they don't have one, we'll pick up their other carts and they would start self-hauling to Moncourt Europe.
And so effective in January, you'll, right, we're not supposed to be commingling, um, organics. And if, so if you're self-hauling, you just need to basically start in, what, January 5th, or whatever you said?
Yeah, when you, when you go to the transfer station come January.
You'll have staff watching self-haulers and asking, right? And, and.
Yep.
Starting that process there. So, so far, so just like recycling doesn't get mixed in the trash any longer?
Right.
Now we have a new world.
Correct.
Okay. Haven?
Nope. Okay. It, it just riddles my, it's, it's, it's hard for me to wrap my head around, but I get it. Thank you for what you guys have done and put together, I know that this is coming from the state. And so I just thank you for all of your guys' hard work. I know this has not been fun, and so I do wanna acknowledge that, I'm sure us up here rattling, rattling our brains around it and not excited about it, I'm sure probably felt a little bit the same. So I just wanted to acknowledge all of your guys' hard work as well.
Thank you.
I just can't wrap my head around putting stuff into a plastic bag to take it down to my garbage to dump it into, I just, I don't understand.
I know, me either.
But I support you and I will do my job.
That's right.
I, I apologize because I know that we have gone over this, it feels like for years and years now. But I, I feel like it's important to, to do our due diligence and to ask these questions because I know the public wants them answered. So, um... So the first thing is I appreciate the consideration of cancellation of garbage services. I think, you know, for people who are having to make decisions about bills, this might be one of those bills, and I just don't see the practicality of people actually self hauling all the way down to Courtney. I think what's going to happen in practice is we're going to see more and more neighbors putting garbage in each other's garbage cans, and then the people paying for services are going to get dinged for having an overflowing garbage can when they didn't do that. And I think, and I hope, that Waste Management has considered a protocol for this exact scenario, when a customer calls up and says, no, when I hauled my garbage can up the driveway, it was level, the lid was closed, everything was properly disposed of, there was no cross contamination, I'm a very good recycler, et cetera, et cetera. You know, I see this being a continual and constant problem. And again, David's point, this is an unfounded mandate given to us by the state of California in the spirit of trying to reduce emissions for organic waste. I, on principle, understand, applaud the intention, and as always, communities where people don't have resources are going to suffer. And when you ran the model about rate hikes, did you project for revenue attrition for canceled services?
That's a good question. I'll have to ask our financial analyst and we can get back to you on that. What is all in that model?
Are we under a timeframe to pass this today? I know, I know, it's.
Deadlines, Zach can tell us how close we are to it. Can I ask you a little bit of your end?
In order to us, for us to roll out the carts in the system by January, then unfortunately, yes.
I don't think there's a hard deadline, we need to be making, we need to be showing that we're doing our due diligence and taking forward steps, right, in implementing this program. Is that fair to say, Zach? Is that how the relationship with Kaver Cycle is right now?
I'll jump in. I mean, Waste Management is on schedule to roll carts out, so, and county's rolling out carts, so it may help with consistency to be on the same timeline program as the county. There's been a pretty wide educational outreach that's been done about this program and the carts are coming. So I think you do have the opportunity to delay, but I'm cautioned that it may be better to stay consistent with what the county's doing and, you know, everybody's talking about it, rather than the city and the county being on separate programs and separate timelines.
Right, the nature of the length of contract, plus the fact that we really, these are economics to scale, so when we operate with our partners, it's best, I think that was the answer at times, is that changes are probably best made when we, when the contract's up and when we can work with our partners outside city limits a little more, is kind of the answer at times.
When is the contract up? I'm sorry?
2030.
2030?
2032.
Okay.
So it's the balance of the original 20-year contract.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any other questions or discussion? Okay, thank you, Zach, thank you, Larry, appreciate it.
Thank you, Zach.
Okay, I will bring it back to council for further discussion, or?
We should note that this is a protest hearing and that the deadline for anybody to submit a protest is now. So if you've got a protest and have not provided to the city clerk, it will not count.
Okay. So what do we want to do? Not that we have a lot of choice, I know.
Right, well, you know, I'd encourage more conversation. There's plenty of incrementally interesting steps that are happening in California and elsewhere about how we look at our waste, Placer County, right, certainly, I think they may even be cheaper than the options provided, and they're certainly less complicated. They have made substantially more investment in this process, so there's a lot to talk about. And so I don't know that we can do anything but what's offered to us at the table right now, but we certainly looked in, we had a lot of conversations. I'd say, you know, there's a lot of hard work that's done at Waste Management, and so some folks, you know, I would just, I'm so thankful that we have people who pick up our waste, and then there were certainly some really difficult conversations, and so, you know, for example, right, guys, every time we ask you a complicated question, you're like, we'll find that out and we'll come back, and then six months later, you come back. It's like, well, that's really hard to have a conversation. So, and so really, we didn't get to answer some questions, right? So that was, it was not the easiest in-depth conversation I had with y'all, and I don't look forward to doing it again, but on behalf of this community, right, you feel obligated to do so. So I look forward to this evolving however it can, for sure. I appreciate, again, the folks who work hard to make our community a better place by picking up our waste and the work that our staff put into it, so, thank you.
And I do want to acknowledge the incredible community involvement that has taken place to come to this, that everybody in this room has good faith, that, you know, this is not, these people are not the call center, they are our community members. I see them at chamber mixers, I see them at events, and I know that you care as much about our community as we do. And so thank you for your hard work. I know this wasn't easy for any of us, and I want to acknowledge, you know, your support and care for this community in this process. Thank you.
So I'll ask a question again. And does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the council hold a public hearing, consider public testimony and a tabulation of protest, and adopt a resolution amending solid waste collection rates for the agreement between the City of Grass Valley and Waste Management.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Zach, and thank you, Larry. Appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda is item number nine, E. Daniels Park Potential Partnership with the Nevada County Library. Who is going to take the lead on that?
Will be me tonight. Tim Keiser, your city manager. Tonight, staff is before you to request approval of some concepts that were included in the staff report, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Nevada County Library for the use of our E. Daniels Park. As summarized in the staff report, the city was looking for a new use for E. Daniels. That building was originally occupied by the GBDA, they moved out a few years ago. We still manage the bathrooms and will continue to manage the bathrooms with Nevada County Library's proposal. We looked at some different options through an RFP process, those were not productive or cost-effective for us, and after that process was completed, the library actually came to us asking, you know, hey, what about a partnership, basically, and looking at how they could use that property in conjunction with the property that backs, their property backs up to ours, and how those could possibly combine to provide some additional outdoor space for our community, how the building could be used for our community and for their use, looking at some diverse community groups, you know, such as teens, English language learners, local resources, organizations, and others, to use that space and make that space more of a community space than it has been for the last few years. Staff is very excited about this opportunity because the county would be looking at doing some upgrades to our building and also upgrading to the park to combine the two areas, and making some outdoor space available to hold small readings or plays and that kind of stuff that I think our community would appreciate. This is one of those opportunities that, from a staff standpoint, kind of is a win-win for us, that, you know, we're providing additional benefits to the community, and we have a partnership with the county to help us make this happen. So with that, there are two people from the library, I can't speak tonight at all, Nevada County Library. We have Nick and Aubrey in the back, if you would like to add any comments, that would be great, or they're available here for questions too.
Thank you very much. So greetings, Mayor Arbuckle and Honorary Board of Supervisors. My name is Nick Wilzek, I am the Nevada County Library Director, and I have with me Aubrey Burkholder, who is the Grass Valley Library Branch Manager, and we are more than happy to answer any questions that you have for us.
Okay, any questions? Tom?
Yeah, how many and how often will wrestling matches be happening?
If it were up to me, which it is to some extent, it would be every month, but I think the appetite for the community is probably not the same as mine.
Tim, you mentioned in there that there'd be upgrades to the building from the county. What about those bathrooms that are attached to that?
So the city would maintain those bathrooms, and we would be looking at to upgrade those, that would not be part of this agreement. The city would still maintain and operate those, that would be outside this agreement.
I think that if we decide to move forward with this agreement, I think that would be a nice gesture to the entire thing, to upgrade those bathrooms, so I would like to put that on a conversation if we move forward with that at some point. I want to congratulate you guys on the beautiful write-up that was about the library, that was super cool. This excites me, and I'll tell you why this excites me. I look at the drawing of what it is, that park needs some energy, and you guys are right there, and I think you can bring an energy and a vibe in there that is going to bring life and bring a really positive impact. Looking at this project, I see the potential of this, and there's not a lot of things you're allowed to fall in love with potential on, but that's one of them. And this is one of those things that I see the vision for the community, and I'm excited about this project, and I'm excited about you maybe partnering with us on this and doing this. So I just want to say that before we move on, but it's beautiful, the layout, the drawing, the excitement, and I'll try to convince the city to do some of those bathrooms.
Okay, are there any questions?
I know, sorry, I'm just excited.
I know.
So the downtown location of where the library is right now is just a little bit off the main thoroughfare. Elizabeth Daniels Park is in the thick of things, Neil gets a lot of traffic to and from, and so I think this is going to change the energy of the Grass Valley Branch a little bit, and I'm, I think, given your proposal, I think that excites you, it excites me as well. I, you know, I don't know how much experience you have working with the downtown businesses, there are lots of GBDA events throughout the year, and so being mindful of those events and partnerships and calendar coordination with some of those things. I mean, for example, you would not want to have like children's story time maybe on the brewfest day. So just be mindful of some of the ways in which paths will cross, because I think you'll have a lot more notice from regular downtown traffic, which is great.
So is there a question in there?
Oh, basically, are you already talking with the GBDA and do you plan to reach out? Thanks, thanks. Keep me on track.
So this project would be in conjunction with upgrades that we're planning to the Grass Valley Library right now. So we're already planning about $2 million worth of deferred maintenance, and as part of that project, we'll be doing community outreach, so gathering information, meeting with folks, and bringing folks in. We understand that upgrades to a historical building can, people will have feelings, and so we really want to be ahead of it, help this board, help the county, help the community understand that we're going to retain the historical flavor of the building, and.
Okay, Tom, do you have a question?
You're not going to change that staircase going downstairs, are you? That historic staircase?
ADA upgrades will be a part of it.
Right on, thank you so much. We, you know, no more questions for me.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any additional questions at this time.
Great, thank you all for your time and support, and also, we are more than happy to help with public education efforts with the waste management change, so feel free to reach out to myself or Aubrey, and we are more than happy to help with that.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to open public comment to anybody that would like to speak to this agenda item, please come to the podium at this time.
Good evening, Mayor Arbuckle, and esteemed counsel, Robin Galvin Davies, Executive Director of the Chamber in the Downtown Association. I will let you know that at our last month's Design Committee meeting, your city manager shared an overview of this proposal with the committee, and it was very, very positively received. We were talking initially about a dog park, but when this was revealed to us, it, the excitement in the room was palpable. The information was then shared with our joint boards at our retreat last week, and overwhelmingly, hands down, a huge, huge win for our community. We absolutely love the concept, we love the partnership, we think that it will change the energy in downtown, having something that has youth orientation in mind, that has learning and workshop potential, performing arts in art. Elizabeth Daniels Park, very, very positive. We are looking forward to working hand in glove with the city and with the library staff to make this a really, really wonderful asset to our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next person for public comment?
Thanks, Lisa Swarth, District Three Supervisor. Thank you all for your enthusiasm for this project. The only thing I can say is, I wish this had been my idea, but it wasn't. I was really glad to see that the city manager has worked with the county staff on this one, but I think this is a real win-win situation for both the county and the city. You know, I vowed when I got elected to the Board of Supervisors a couple of years ago to increase the involvement and the participation and the collaboration with between the City of Grass Valley and the County of Nevada, so I think this is a really great project to do that. Having been a downtown merchant for 30 years, I can't tell you how many times every week that I had young moms in my store, they came for a visit to the library, and then they came shopping downtown and they go, I mean, I know Lazy Dog does a huge business based on the kids at the library, so the work that they're doing to really expand and work on the downstairs, which is the youth, the young kids and the teenage group, and then having it just go right out to the outdoor area and then into the park, I think is a huge win for everybody, so I'm super excited about this as well. I would be happy to work on any sort of communication. The one downside is the library will be closed for a short period of time while they do, while they do the construction there, so they are going to be looking for some space, the county's going to be looking for some temporary space to move the library to, because we don't want it to shut down in Grass Valley, we want to make sure that it's continual operation, especially the youth part of it, so we'll be looking for some space, hopefully we can find, you know, maybe some temporary space in downtown to do it, but thank you, guys, I think this is great. thank you, guys. I think this is great. I look forward to working with everybody on it.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else want to comment on this agenda item? Okay. See, no, none. Is there anybody in the virtual world?
There are no additional public comments.
Okay. Then I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to council for further discussion or a motion?
You know my feelings.
Yeah.
I'll make motion that we consider the concept of a partnership with the Nevada County Library for upgrading and using Elizabeth Daniels Park and authorize the city manager to negotiate an agreement with the Nevada County Library for the use of Elizabeth Daniels, subject to the city council approval at a later date.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
So you know that your planning commissioner helped spark this, uh, conversation.
Jacob?
Jacob.
I love Jacob. I picked well. Um, okay. Last item on the agenda is, um, brief reports by council members and want to start with Tom.
Um, represented the City of Grass Valley on the Pioneer Community Board, uh, Pioneer Community Energy Board last week. Um, of interest is there's a new, uh, ag water pricing program being rolled out in Northern California to all electricity providers, but it's, um, for our ag community, you can now log on and see the electrical rates for the next two weeks ahead of you and schedule your large ag or your large electrical usages that way and hope. So kind of a cool, cool piece of news anyways. Um, coming back to us, the, um, Pioneer Community Energy is, um, has a number of applications, uh, to join it, uh, potentially doubling its size in the upcoming years. Um, I don't believe any of it's official, but so there's kind of some big changes coming to that little board. Um, and you know, lastly, I guess I've recently got the chance to hear a little bit about what the city and the vast city is doing with some of their fire, um, resources and um, I can't wait for us to kind of learn more and, and act maybe in similar or different ways that help us. Um, I love that maybe it's time for us to extend our Firewise community borders inside city limits. And, um, I want to have that conversation coming up here pretty soon. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Haven?
Um, I had a meeting with, um, Eliza and Heather from the Arts Council with Tim and we had a discussion around doing some sort of art install when Christmas comes down. So that was exciting to kind of partner with them and do kind of a call to action and figure out other ways that we can partner with our cultural arts district. Um, I attended the ERC board meeting. Um, lots of discussion around what's going to come and who's going to be doing some presentations there. So I will share that information in the December, who will be there in January. If you've never been to an ERC actual meeting and you're interested in learning about things that are happening within your community, this is a great place for you to come. There's a lot of really cool people who sit and talk about broadband or PG&E underground and things that are actually matter to us in our community. Um, Jan and Tim and I met with Ti- uh, Tim DiMartini. Um, if you don't know what California is trying to do to RVs, you should probably, um, watch his video. And if you would like that, please shoot me an email and I will send it over to you. We were talking to him about how we as a city can help support or what we can do to get some information to the right people so that he can stay in business. So that is all, well, I'm sure there was more, but I forget to write them all down in my calendar. So I remember to share with all of you good people, but. Oh, and don't forget to go to Cornish Christmas. I, I do want to, it is the busiest one of the year. Um, but don't forget to go. It is a fun, sweet event to go shopping and to go spend time with your family who's in town. And it is like a hallmark Christmas card when you go down there. So that's all.
Okay. Hillary?
Good reminder. Um, I had the opportunity to speak to the Nevada County Leadership Institute last week, um, with fellow panelists on what serving in local government looks like. And, um, it was a great class. I have had the opportunity to speak to various classes throughout the years. Um, and really loved the enthusiasm, uh, and the informed and intelligent questions. I think we have a great group of future leaders for our community. And that, um, aside from all of the choir practices and, and other musical things, that, that pretty much covers it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I attended the holiday open house and tree lighting, which, um, as Hillary was there as well. And it was very well attended. I think there were more people there than we had anticipated. But it was, the whole goal was to make it a local event so that people, because last year's first night of Cornish Christmas was insane about how many people. We were very fortunate that nobody got hurt and there were no incidents. So, um, I think that the GBDA and Chamber are look, and the city are looking to do that on a regular basis. Just have to settle in on what the best time is. I attended, I missed the last meeting and I was attending the National League of Cities City Summit in Tampa. Um, and had some amazing, um, sessions. One that was an invitation only was Small Cities Big Ideas. Mayor Castor, the mayor of Tampa, did a, um, PowerPoint on this new way of treating water, using less chemicals. It was extremely interesting. They sent me the, um, PowerPoint, which I have forwarded to Tim as well as, um, many of the other things that I got excited about that no one would ever think I would get excited about because it was just, the innovation was amazing in that we could use it in, in our smaller cities as opposed to just the big, larger cities. As Chair of the Small Cities Council for the National League of Cities, it's been, um, it's been really helpful for this area because I'm invited to so many different things that concern small cities. And small cities in National League of Cities is 50,000 and below, but it's still a smaller city. I was re-elected to the National League of Cities Board of Directors, um, which is a two-year term. I went to the Downtown Association Chamber Retreat, which was really, it's always a good, um, it's a good experience to listen to different people and different, um, ideas of the people who own the business and how it's affecting them and um, what they want to do to move forward together. It's, it was, it was a time well spent. Uh, and then I had a meeting with the county regarding, um, some other issues. I did my last mayor manager on Monday, uh, of the year. So, um, which was good. I did an on the town, on the state parks and, um, I did my last Monday with the mayor. So, which was great and something that I will miss. So that is it.